Everyone, I would like to welcome you all to the Tuesday, August 19th, 2025 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. We're glad to have you all in attendance today. We also have several people watching online and wanted to say welcome. At this time, I'd like to welcome our Sheriff, Mr. Tracy Murfree, and he is going to lead us on vacation. And our pledge is we'll be led by our Denton County Veteran's Service Officer, Paul Bassett. If you'll please stand. I would like to remind you to please turn off your cell phones.
Will you pray with me, please? Dear God, Father, thank you so much, Father, just for another day, another day of life, Father, another opportunity to serve, to serve you, Father, and to serve our fellow man. Father, I just, I lift up this body, Father, this Commissioners' Court, God, I ask you to bless them, to lead them. And, Father, I pray that you will get your will done through them, Father. And we're thankful for them and their willingness to serve. Father, I lift up our country. And all the turmoil going on, Father, is because we've left you out of everything, God. And we pray that we'll come to an understanding that without you, there's not going to be any peace. And I lift up our elected officials throughout our land, our president, down to our precinct chairs, Father, who have to understand that it's not just political philosophy, Father, it's you. And you're the answer. And until we seek you, Father, we know that there's going to continue to be turmoil. Father, I ask your forgiveness when I do the same thing, God, when I don't rely on you, when I seek answers other than through you, Father. And I fail you every day, and you continue to love me, and I'm very thankful for that. Father, bless everyone here, their families, and just safety upon them, in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and now to the great estate, Texas. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, Sheriff, for that lovely prayer, and thank you, Paul, for being here and leading us in our pledges. At this time, I'd like to go to item one, which was for public input for items not listed on the agenda. And we have a few public comment forums. I'll start with Ms. Jane Schultz. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. Well, thank you for making me first.
Absolutely.
And I want to thank you also for taking the time to meet with me and one of my colleagues about vote centers a few weeks ago. That was a great conversation, very thoughtful.
It was. Thank you.
And along with comments that I've heard from the opponents here, that has expanded my view on the issue of countywide election day voting. So, at the past, I've looked at this something as it's going on today and something with the history, but I hadn't thought about it going forward. But it's become clear to me that it's also a growth issue. And that in addition to assigned precinct voting causing problems for thousands of voters every election day now, it's going to be a problem for even more voters on every election day in the not-so-distant future. From those who oppose vote centers, we've heard from judges in places like Robeson Ranch, Justin, Ponder, and Northlake, who turn away very few or no voters on election day. And then we've heard from judges in Frisco, Flowerman, Lewisville, and Denton, who are redirecting hundreds of voters on every election day. The county's own numbers from Election Day, May 3rd, show us that they are all telling the truth, and they are giving us a vision of our future. So, polling places in busy urban centers are a preview of what is coming to the quiet polls near Robeson, Justin, Ponder, Northlake, and elsewhere in the next few years. I live at Robeson, so I'm very aware of the millions of square feet of retail, office, and educational development that's going up soon near me. And of course, the same thing is happening elsewhere. These new locations are going to create the same need for vote centers that election workers have told you about in our current business centers. Now, most of the people who are in these new areas from nine to five won't live in the same precinct where they work, shop, or take their kids to school. They'll want to vote on their way to or from those locations or over lunch on election day, just like they do during early voting, and just like they did in the places that they moved to our county from. So, pretty soon, those polling locations with few redirected voters now will be handling hundreds of election day redirects to. I can just see it coming. Now, you spend most of your time in these meetings dealing with the impact of growth. You wisely build the roads, the water, the sewer, and the traffic systems for that growth. You don't force newcomers to get to these locations on two-lane dirt roads, or drink untreated well water, or discharge waste into our streams. Now, my colleagues and I urge you to do the same wise planning for our elections. You've already smartly invested in a safe, secure, and scalable balloting system. Now you can take the lead with political stakeholders to come up with an election system that accommodates the 100,000 more voters we're going to have in the next 10 years. Shackling voters to the home precinct voting system of 100 years ago is like forcing them to drive through our gleaming, to our gleaming new commercial hubs on muddy, two-lane dirt roads. Please give our voters countywide election day voting now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good to see you. Next is Mr. Dan Burnham. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for allowing me.
Absolutely.
And I don't have much that I can add to what was just stated, but I do want to say, you probably remember about two weeks ago, I was here questioning why the concept of shutting down precinct-oriented voting centers is tied directly to the expansion of voter access by allowing all Denton County registered voters to vote at any spot. Speaker after me ensured us that that was at the very heart of the concept. I was still confused as to why and where this is stated. I went to vote Denton.gov website to try and learn more, and I found nothing on the website that was correlating these two opposing concepts together. It strictly stated that the vote, idea of voting center was allowing all registered voters in Denton County to vote. So, I'm really not seeing that as an argument against something. They're not, they shouldn't be associated in the same conversation. I oppose closing down any of the voter polling sites due to growth and due to current usage. I don't want to reduce access for anybody. Now, I was told that all of you received a copy of the report that she may have mentioned, too, that was taken during the municipal elections, which we know these are some of our most actively engaged voters. Sure enough, at places like Robeson Ranch, they only redirected one. Prosperous Fire Station only redirected two. Ponder Town Hall redirected zero. But then you move over to Denton Civic Center, redirected 52. Northlake's Recreation Center, right by my house, directed 139. Flowerman Senior Center's directed 100, redirected 109. Now, we don't know that all these redirects materialized in the lack of votes. We hope that most of them were able to just, you know, 20, 25-minute inconvenience to make it to the next site. We don't really know how many votes that was a hurdle that they couldn't overcome. But it's obvious evidence that the process is not perfect. It's not, at least my idea, perfect. Perfection is probably something we can't really achieve, but we should always be working towards perfection. And I do state that working as an election clerk for some form or another for the last 20 years, every election cycle, I see Denton County make major, major improvements. Where we were 20 years ago, it's night and day. So, I have full faith that you will continue this progress to increase voter access, help cut down on some of the problems. When you have 109 people that you have to redirect, that's potentially 109 disgruntled employees that potentially do cause disruptions within the voting center. They're concerned. They voted there for years. Why can't they vote there now? Let's decrease that frustration level. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Good. Thank you, sir. Me, too. Next is Elizabeth Hopkins.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for being here today and letting us all voice our opinions.
Absolutely.
I am precinct chair for 1035 in Little Elm. I'm also an area chair for Little Elm East. I've been elections judge, I'm sorry, I've been a resident of Denton County for over 25 years. I've also been an elections job on many of the primary elections on multiple occasions. In my experience, we do indeed experience some voter redirection, but we always have signs out by the lines indicating which precincts are allowed to vote in that the polling place that we're located in. And we also provide a person who's walking up and down the lines, making sure that people are in the right program or in the right location. If they do get up to the check-in location, then we give them the new address for where they need to go. An example is where I often judge or volunteer is at a local elementary school, and a lot of people just come across the street to elementary school. And they say, well, I live across the street. But that street happens to be the line for a precinct, and they just need to go over to the high school, which is about a mile away. So, it's really not any inconvenience, and we've not experienced anyone being upset about it. My guess would be about 5% in Little Elm. The most freak, anyway, my concern is that voting centers are going to result in more confusion, longer commutes, longer lines, thus shorter tempers, and reduced voter turnout. Voting is a community activity, and that is one that's enjoyed by neighbors, being able to see each other as they participate in their civic duty and privilege. I know that I often see many of my neighbors, and it's nice to get to greet them and talk to them about the day that they're having and thank them for coming out to vote. Keeping polling locations based on the precincts must be kept localized to where the voter lives in order to provide the convenience, prevent voter fraud, and thus increase voter turnout. And that's about my take on it.
Perfect. Good. Thank you for being here. Thank you for working our polls as an election judge. Next is Lois McDougall. McDougal? Sorry if I butchered that. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lois McDougal, and I'm precinct chair 1034 out of Little Elm. And I've been an election clerk for several elections since 2020 in Denton County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you against countywide voting centers. The point I want to make to you today is this: Just because there are countywide voting doesn't mean that there won't be confusion. I'm originally from Maricopa County, Arizona, and came to Texas when I was 38 years old. I love Arizona, not as much as I love Texas, but I love, I do care about Arizona. And I still have relatives there. One is my 92-year-old uncle, who asked me to help him when it comes to election time. We discussed the candidates over the phone, and I have kept close tabs on Maricopa County. So, here are some facts about Maricopa County, which, by the way, is the second-largest voting jurisdiction in the United States, according to their website, with 2.6 million registered voters. In 2020, there were 748 precincts, but in the 2022 midterms in the Cary Lake election, they shrunk everything down to 223 vote centers. This is where there was substantial machine failure in primarily Republican areas. Here's what happened. Although 19-inch paper was used in 2020, they switched to 20-inch paper for the midterms. There was so much to vote on that they needed extra-long paper. However, they acquired new printers that worked fine with the 20-inch paper, but not the Oki printers from 2020, which they continued to use. So, Oki printers rejected the ballots. Now, what ensued was a lot of confusion. Many voters were redirected to other vote centers much further away, or they were directed to put their ballots in box three, which ended up not having proper chain of custody. And when they eventually expanded the writing to cover the 20-inch paper, it covered up the date and timestamp. How convenient for an audit. Now, this is confusion, okay? So, closer to home, we have probably heard about the failures of Harris County. In 2022, Harris had paper shortages and equipment failures in vote centers, causing locations to open up to an hour late. Dallas, in its May 2021 election, had at least nine Dallas vote centers open from one to four hours late. So, confusion can happen in vote centers, too, and possibly even on a larger scale. So, my sources for my statistics in Texas are the Texas Tribune, Texas Scorecard, WFAA. And for Arizona, it's the Gateway Pundit, Jovan Hutton Pulitzer, who is the only forensic expert in the world that has examined 2.5 million actual paper ballots. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Melinda Preston.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge Eads. I just wanted to talk a little bit about people moving to Texas. People move to Denton County from other states in search of freedom. I was at the, this week, I've spent some time at the North Texas Fair, and I had somebody from France, a family from France, a family from Canada come in and talk about how they're in search of freedom, and that's why they came here. And it was very, it was a very interesting conversation. In many places they came from, voters may have been used to all mail-in elections. I don't know if you know that happens in Oregon, crazy voting centers or precinct-based voting on election day. But they chose Denton County because they value the system we have, one that is proven, secure, and built to preserve election integrity. As someone who has worked at the polls for years, I can say this: Our process works. It's well-organized, transparent, and treats voters with respect. I've never seen anyone walk away upset or feeling like their voice wasn't heard. Yes, I've had to redirect a few people, but they were never mad, and they totally understood. So, I disagree with the thought that, or even, you know, people declaring that people walk away mad. I think that if we look at the way our voting process works here in Denton County, we have the best of the best. Again, we have voting centers in the beginning. We have precinct voting on the day. Everybody's needs are met. It really is a beautiful thing. I am hearing that they are going to work towards getting rid of voting centers. I'm sure you guys have heard that, too. So, I would ask us all to not make any decisions until we hear what's going to happen and where we're going to go. And I so appreciate you guys. And also, our elections. You know, we have Frank Phillips, who is absolutely amazing and works tirelessly to make sure that we have flawless elections, and we are blessed.
Thank you. All right. There's no other, I want to thank you all for coming today. And there is no other public comment forums that have been completed or registered. So, we'll proceed with our posted agenda items. Let's go ahead, and we will go, let's go to item 3A, which is approval of a court proclamation recognizing August 31st as North Texas Overdose Awareness Day. And we have Sharon Rowland with us. Sharon, are you here? Okay. Good morning. If you'll please come forward. Thank you for being with us today.
Thank you for having me.
Would you like to make any introductory comments before I read our proclamation?
I would like to say that our family has hosted North Texas Overdose Awareness Day since 2018, after the death of my youngest son, Randy, from an overdose. And through the years and with the support of friends, local businesses, other organizations, the city of Denton, Denton County, and of course, this Commissioners' Court, North Texas Overdose Awareness Day has grown into a meaningful awareness event with over 500 people in attendance last year. So, we want to invite everyone to join us again this year on Sunday, August 31st at 6:30 PM on the lawn of the Denton Courthouse on the square. And we thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. And as I've said before, we're so sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
But I'm heartened that you're using that loss and that grief to productive energy so to promote awareness of this critical issue. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, this is a court proclamation recognizing North Texas Overdose Awareness Day. And whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is a global campaign on the 31st day of August each year, which sanctions events held locally to promote awareness of the opioid crisis. And whereas preliminary data released by the CDC shows that there were more than 89,000 overdose deaths in the United States in 2024, representing for the first time in many years a decrease in lives lost. And whereas the CDC credits this decline to increase awareness of overdose, more use of MOUD treatment, and widespread community availability, and an opioid antagonist that can stop or reverse an overdose. And whereas North Texas Overdose Awareness Day aims to raise awareness of drug overdose within the community, to provide resources, support, and harm reduction for those who struggle with substance use disorder and the disease of addiction, to reduce the stigma of drug-related deaths, and to acknowledge the grief felt by families and friends, remembering those who have died or had a permanent injury as a result of drug overdose. And whereas the North Texas Overdose Awareness Day spreads the message that substance use disorder, addiction, and overdose deaths affect all of us, regardless of race, gender, education, or socioeconomic status. And whereas it is imperative that we set aside a day for remembrance and education to unite in the fight against the tragedy of drug overdose, which is entirely preventable. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners- And now therefore be resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim August the 31st as North Texas Overdose Awareness Day in Denton County and urges all citizens to remember those who struggle daily with substance use disorder and all of those who we have lost due to drug addiction and overdose. Done in open court this 19th day of August 2025 upon a motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Williams. Members, do you have any additional comments?
Thank you for doing this. It's a, it's a, it's a very important thing that you're doing and if you can save one individual, then you've done, done a heck of a job.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Appreciate all you're doing. It's hard, but you're keeping it alive and making sure that we're all aware of the, of the drug overdose that are happening in our country and I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Part of this, part of, we talk about this all the time on this and many other topics is that if you don't talk about it and bring awareness to it, that's maybe the first step, right? And so that you can help others and talk about it and so there's awareness. So part of, it's one of the first steps in treating an issue is talking about it publicly like this, and so I appreciate you coming forth all these years and advocating for this, so we appreciate you. All right, any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, let's next go to item 5A's approval of the bill report. Payments from CSD, Community Corrections, TIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT, Interest in DA, Forfeiture Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have no chances today. Recommend approval as presented.
All right, we have no changes. A motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 5B, approval of the jail commissary annual audit report for the year ending September 30th, 2025.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6A, approval of the renewal of ITB 242821 tree lighting and annual maintenance to decor IQ. Chair move for approval. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6B, approval of renewal of ITB 2326, 2762 fire alarm, fire sprinkler, kitchen hood system, and radio tower building inspections and testing to allied fire protection.
Second.
Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6C, approval of evaluations committees recommendation to Rank Architects as the most qualified firm for the roof screen design services at the current building under project RFQ 232724 architectural services miscellaneous facilities projects.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7A, report for miscellaneous equipment and software services presented for recording purposes only. Thank you. Next is go to 7B, approval of the budget mem request 20252A for Constable Precinct 3 to transfer $11,049 from county vehicles unappropriated contingency to Constable Precinct 3 vehicle care to cover the cost of repairs at a, to a law enforcement vehicle that was damaged during an accident.
Move to approve.
Second.
By Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7C, approval of budget mem request 202532 for the Public Health Department to transfer $55,000 from non-departmental unappropriated contingency to death investigations and medical examiner services. Confidential funds provide additional funding for decedent transport supplies.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7D, approval of any appropriate action related to the fiscal year county budget. We'll do that later. Let's go to, we will, let's go, let's go ahead and do 7F, approval of setting Tuesday, September 9th, 2025 at 10:00 AM. As the day the Commissioners Court will hold a public hearing for discussion of proposed fiscal year 2026 tax rate and the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget located in Denton, Denton County Administrative Courthouse 1, Courthouse Drive, Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, 76208. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 8A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one new hire in adult probation, one new hire in juvenile probation, one rehire in the sheriff's office, and two new hires in the sheriff's office. Two of those are detention officer ones. That's it for this.
Thank you. Next is item 9A, approval of the Texas Health and Human Services Commission contract number HHS 001529700024, family planning grant fiscal year 2026. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is a 10A, approval of the request to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 9th, 2025 at 9:00 AM to consider, approve, deny, or take appropriate action for a zoning change from agricultural to R4 residential estate medium density, LRR 06250011. Property R41118 is located in Lake Ray Roberts Planting zoning district and Commissioner Precinct 1.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 10B, approval of request to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 9th, 2025 at 9:00 AM to consider, approve, deny, or take appropriate action for a zoning change request from ag agriculture to R4 residential estate medium density, LRR 06250014. Property R771453 is located in Lake Ray Roberts Planting zoning district and Commissioner Precinct 1.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is 10C, approval request to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 9th, 2025 at 9:00 AM to consider, approve, deny, or take appropriate action for a zoning change request from ag agriculture to R4 residential estate medium density, LRR 06250015. This is property R698893 is located in Lake Ray Roberts Planting zoning district and Commissioner Precinct 1.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. This sounds familiar. Next is item number 10D, approval of request to hold a public hearings Tuesday, September 9th, 2025 at 9:00 AM to consider, approve, deny, or take appropriate action for a zoning change request from ag agriculture to R3 residential single-family low-density district, LRR 06250016. This is property R59656 is located in Lake Ray Roberts Planting zoning district and precinct, Commissioner Precinct 1.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is item 10E, approval of the preliminary acceptance of the Nell Road widening project located Commissioner Precinct 4. No, that is precinct 4.
Yeah.
That is precinct 4. I remember it well. We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. There's no action on item 10F that'll be reposted a future date. Let's go to item 12A, under the sheriff, which is approval of the 2025-2026 joint interlocal cooperation agreement for school resource investigator between Denton Independent School District, the DISD, and Denton County.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is 12B, approval of the amendment to the 2024-2025 interlocal agreement between Denton County and the City of Sanger Police and Fire Departments for the use of the Denton County radio communication systems.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, let's go to 12C, approval of the amendment to the 2025-2026 interlocal agreement between Denton County and the City of Sanger Police and Fire Departments for the use of the Denton County radio communication system.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is 13A, approval of the Commissioners Court operating policy updates and revisions. And do we have any questions or comments about that?
No.
If not, the chair will move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, let's go to 14A, approval of the 2025-2026 affiliation agreement between Denton County, Texas on behalf of the Denton County District Attorney's Office and Denton Independent School District on behalf of La Groan Academy Law, Public Safety Corrections, and Security Program. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is 14B, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and Green Meadows Public Improvement District for the collection of special assessments levied by the district as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is 14C, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreements between Denton County, Texas and the City of Lewisville for the collection of special assessments levied by the following entities, one, the Josie Lane Public Improvement District, two, the Lakeside Crossing Public Improvement District, as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is 14D, approval of the interlocal cooperation agreements for property tax assessments and collection between Denton County, Texas and each of the following entities, one, the City of Lewisville, two, Clear Sky Municipal Utility District, three, Lake Dallas Independent School District, as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is 14E, approval of interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County, Texas and Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District for collection of special assessments levied by the district as recommended by the Denton County Tax Assessor Collector. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is 14F, approval of amendment to CJIS Odyssey Maintenance and Support Services Agreement between Tyler Technologies Incorporated and Denton County for the SEVENS interface and the amount of $1,733 to come from the 1001 general fund, costing or CC 20920 Information Technology Judicial Program, PR 2075, spend category technology software services as recommended by Kevin Carr, Chief Information Officer.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go back to, to item two, which is our consent agenda members. Are there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda to have a motion to approve as presented?
Still move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item 2A, approval of the order-making appointments and any appropriate action, and item 2B, approval of the July 2025 road superintendent report. This is presented for recording purposes only. Bianca, did we get all of those items except for our budget items? We, I believe we got them. Let's go, next, let's go to item, we will skip executive session for right now. Let's go to item 17, which is community updates. Members, do we have any community updates? We'll start with Commissioner Precinct 1.
Thank you, Judge. Want to, volleyball has already begun and the best of luck to our student athletes. I wish them all a great season. One more week for Friday night football around Precinct 1. Games are scheduled for next Friday, August 29th, wishing all the football players a great season and a safe one as that as well, so that's all I've got.
Perfect, thank you. Commissioner Falconer.
Thank you, Judge. I've got a few things going on in Precinct 2. Little Elm has the farmer's market at the lawn on the 23rd from 9:00 to 1:00. And Frisco has their summer movie series at the PGA District. August 22nd is going to be the Barbie movie. That'll be at 8:00 at PGA Frisco. And then Carrollton has a couple of things. We have lunch and chat with the Carrollton Police Department on the 27th at 11:00 to 1:00. That is at the PD. And then we have the Metrocrest Services in Carrollton is hosting a toilet paper drive to help stock their shelves and that ends the 26th. And then if you haven't heard, there is a nationwide initiative to clear animal shelters to get pets adopted and so Carrollton Animal Services is doing that as well as a lot of others. And that goes through the end of the month and be, be sure if you can, give, give those, those dogs and cats out.
Perfect, good. Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell.
And Flora, ma'am, we're having a join in for a three-mile run around the Lake City community on August 21st, 7:00 PM. We also have the Lakeside Music Series on August 27th, 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM. In Lake Dallas, we're still having trade days and farmer's market on August 23rd behind the First Baptist Church. In Louisville, we have a National Senior Citizen Day celebration, August 21st, 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM. You all can join in if you'd like. Also in Louisville, I'll be there too. On August 26th, at 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Louisville Library, we have free vision screen at the Holland Village Lion Club for anyone ages six months and older.
Perfect, thank you, Commissioner Edmondson.
Good morning. Thank you, Judge. Let me apologize for being late. Between 35 cars in line at Crawford Road and 35, and then as we got around those, over to 377, a train heading south with 3,000 tons of coal.
Wow.
Yeah, I apologize, but had no choice but to stop and wait, so.
Yeah.
I'm going to talk to the commissioner of that area and see if we can't do something about that.
Absolutely.
Anyway, the roundup this week for me includes backyard chickens again. We didn't finish up with that. So if you're interested in learning the ins and outs of residential chicken ownership, please contact the Clear Creek Natural Heritage Center through Denton. And then I, like Commissioner Falconer said, clear the shelters is an important event that's going on throughout, I think throughout the state and it goes through the end of the month. And I did want to mention the North Texas State Fair, which by the way, I was privileged to be a judge for some of their baking contests. Y'all, there were 2,200 entries.
Did you taste all of them?
No, ma'am, I did not taste all of them. They hadn't divided into four different groups.
Oh, good.
But what was kind of neat was we had some come from as far as Fort Hood.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, we were interested in baking and it was very, very interesting and I appreciated the fact that there were everything from youngsters to oldsters doing the baking and we awarded some grand prizes and some reserve grand prizes and it was fun. And I was told on good authority that as long as you're doing this for a community service, the carbs and the calories do not count. So I enjoyed the presentation.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I just would like to, we have many people who come to our Commissioners Court. We welcome y'all being in attendance. I just want to make sure that y'all realize that we will be having a special meeting this Friday, August 22nd at 9:30, and there'll be no Commissioners Court on the following Tuesday, August 26th. We will not have court then, but we will resume on September the 9th at 9:00 AM. I want to let everybody know that. And yes, we, the North Texas Fair and rodeo is going strong and, and it will run through Sunday, August 24th. We encourage people to come out, go out there and enjoy the live music and the midways, rides, rodeos, exhibitions, and that'd be great. And then this, on Sunday, August 24th, kids who are interested in learning more about 4H, which is one of our great programs here at the county, you can come into our administrative courthouse here at the third floor, the 2020 room from 5:00 to 6:00, and learn more about 4H. We'd love to have you participate in that. All right, at this time, yes, ma'am.
I have an announcement.
Yes, we do have an announcement. Go ahead.
I'm going to embarrass her, but I have something great going on in Precinct 3 in my office. Today is April Greenhill's birthday.
Happy birthday.
And we do have cake.
Well, I do believe you had a birthday over the weekend too, young lady.
Somebody else had a birthday, so.
You had a birthday over the weekend.
A very special.
Do we have enough birthday cake for both of them? I hope so. Hope so. Well, happy birthday to both of you and we're glad to have y'all celebrate.
Glad you had another birthday.
Absolutely.
Yep.
All right, let's go to, to our executive session. We have a few things posted here. Item 15A, Texas Government Code 5501072, deliberation regarding real property, closing deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, deliberation, open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of a governmental body in negotiations with a third person. Next is 15B, Texas Government Code 551071A, a Next is 15B, Texas Government Code 5510711A, consultation with attorney, closed meeting when the governmental body seeks the advice of its attorney about pending litigation and cause number 425CV00237, St. Rawlins versus City of Plano at All, which is currently pending in the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas. And 15C, Texas Government Code 5510711A, consultation with attorney and closed meeting when a governmental body seeks the advice of its attorney about pending litigation and MDL number 2804 regarding national prescription opiate litigation, which is currently pending in the United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio, and it is 9:40. We're in executive session.